So why don't we? There was seven. Yeah, tell me about it. So why don't we look at now at the memo on North Avenue?
Yeah. Okay. And if anybody wants to look at the proposal? Love to. Is this the North Avenue proposal?
Yeah.
So maybe somebody can read it and the other person can look at the plans. Yeah, you actually I think have it electronically too.
The plans?
Yeah. Really?
We do.
Yeah. When did they come through?
Last week or something like that.
It says like some giant thing?
Yes.
It's not that giant.
First paragraph, I've got a question.
Yeah.
The project is proposed as a local initiative petition project.
Right.
So who's proposing?
A company called Polymath Development. And they're going to the Housing Partnership to get approval for as a LIP project.
To get approval?
Yeah, or to get blessing or whatever.
Is so the the LIP petition would have to be authorized by the Board of Selectmen?
So they're going to the Housing Partnership? As I understand it, they're going to the Housing Partnership first, then the Housing Partnership will make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen?
I don't know. That's a question. That's why I'm asking the question. Who is actually sponsoring the project? Is it is?
I don't think anybody's made that call yet.
Okay. Okay.
Did you say the entire lot is 1.4 acres?
Yeah.
Yes. Believe it or not.
I don't believe it. They got those five houses on.
I will I will tell you.
Well, look at the contours.
No, I know it's still.
The um. The architect, if you want to see something similar to what will be is proposed for construction, if you go down Route 3 in Winchester, right across from Mahoney's Rocky Ledge, there is a development that was approved with 50 units on 10 acres.
Wow.
It has sewer though. That's the big difference. And it was done with a zoning change in Winchester and it has five affordable units. But the same architect who is proposing these buildings, it's very similar in style of architecture.
This is Residence D. Okay.
It's Residence D and A.
Oh, there are. Okay.
What's the dog?
Which is which is nearest the road?
D. And it's 20,000. I mean.
I'm sorry, you say it right here.
Yeah.
The Dog Ranch Development. Would you say this reminds you of the Dog Ranch?
Oh, no.
But it's 100 times worse.
Oh, my God.
The Dog Ranch Development?
Yeah, no, no, that's 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 a different kettle of fish altogether. It's, you know.
No, but you know what I mean? Just out of the blue, you get all these houses jammed in.
I don't quite figure out with 120 acre, I mean 120 foot frontage, how they're doing what they're doing.
I don't it's they're aren't they right out of the property lines?
Yeah.
I don't see how they got these five houses on. The houses are bigger than any of the adjacent houses and yet they got five of them on an acre or.
Yeah. It doesn't really, it seems like Fantasy Island. Yeah. Well, I think it's going to read almost as one building.
Doesn't really look that way. I mean, it looks like the back building is pretty. Again, there's just.
Those are the part of one building.
Are these half acre lots in that area or?
The Residence D zoning is 20,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's, you know, you know.
With 150 feet of frontage.
Right, but like this, this must be smaller than a half acre. If that's an acre, that's a lot smaller than a half acre. It's like.
But it's grandfather's.
There's a fair amount of pre-existing known formity.
This is a little, this is a little cottage.
Yeah.
We've seen this lot before, actually maybe before you were on the board. Yeah, it's a, we've seen this one before, but a single family home. We went through this whole thing.
Goes all the way back there, that seat?
Yeah, but it's very steep. Look at the grade.
Yeah, I know.
It goes up in a hurry.
It goes up 30 feet in a very short distance.
These are the better.
I know. Great.
I'm sure you're looking forward to this one. You're the one, if you're if you're standing on the street, you're the guy on the right.
He's the one that bought.
Now he's the one on the left.
On the left.
He's one down.
On the other.
He's this, he's this property.
The one that wraps around.
Which one?
This property. His property is here. There's one in between.
Oh, okay.
Which one?
But his property wraps wraps around to a butted.
A couple of sides, yeah.
I think I remember you from when we were looking at the previous proposal, which was a sing for a single family house. I think we looked at that several years ago. And then there was a lot of concern about that house.
So D is here. And so they're proposing three units, part of this one on a septic field. And then this, oh, so almost four units. And then my concern is, I mean, this part here.
Oh, is this the one way?
Here on is all just really heavily wooded and heavily sloped.
Yeah. It goes from 130 to 162.
This is 172, 74 here.
Yeah, it's very. It's just. It's way over built.
Oh, come on, that's beautiful. Just because you're an architect and it takes.
I like the fact that it's shown on a flat piece of ground.
What do you like?
Contour schmonters.
Building elevations. It's shown on a piece of ground that's flat as this table. Not contours going like that.
There you go.
Contour schmonters. What do you mean contour?
There's your change.
So Steve, Google Greystone in Winchester.
Greystone.
Greystone.
Is it G R E Y or A Y?
I think it's E Y. The roof lines are just way out of that.
Roof lines. It's kind of, it'll look like one building.
A Y, Greystone of Winchester.
Yeah, here it is. So it's a little circle with many, many things. So.
And it's sold out?
Yeah, well.
50 homes sold, over 47 million in sales.
That's what it looks like. That's what it's.
So you found it.
Yeah, there it is. So here's the rest of the town. Trees, other stuff, and then there's Greystone.
Oops.
I can sort of see it there. I mean, it's pretty massive, but I mean, I can't get it at least. I mean, there's this giant garden center. Mahoney's is right there. Is Cambridge Street, is that a listed?
That's Route 3A.
Street.
Yeah, okay.
This is Mahoney's.
Yeah. Can you get the street view? Is that what the green stripe means?
No, that's a trap.
Okay.
I could, I think I could do that on the website.
We can do that on Google Earth, can't we? There's a bigger, there's two.
You may have to go to the website.
Four bit ones with masters on the first floor. Most of, all of them have masters on the first floor. And then some of the second floors have two bedrooms and some have.
What kind of zone change did it need?
It's a comprehensive permit.
Yeah, this is 40B.
But this one in Winchester, they got a zone change? Did they need a zone change for it?
No, they just bypassed zoning for the 40B.
Oh, I thought you didn't need a zone change.
Yeah, I thought I heard that too. Okay, so.
I think it's more than likely that it's going to require blasting. I think it's almost a certainty.
Sadly, when Google sent their satellite over, it was still in the process of being built. Want to see it in the early phases?
Oops. Try Bing.
Oh, yeah, like they had better.
They might.
They get, they may come from different sources.
Wow, this was amazing. They stripped that place.
Yep.
Here it is. This is how they did it.
Yeah. That's what they're going to do here.
There's no other way.
This is the clear cut. With a with a very large.
That property was called, was one of the last remaining farms in Winchester. And in, if you looked at an area in Winchester in 1950, 55, no, 60, 45. The whole west side of town from 3A over was farmed. And this actually, they sold pansies there. It's called Pansy Patch.
What's your point?
Open space?
Does?
Well, there's a resident one. Sorry.
Can we get off Winchester and just talk about this one?
Yeah.
I just wanted to show you what it was going to look like.
Does 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 this, is this required to go through the Stormwater Committee?
I believe that 40Bs are exempt from that.
But I thought they were exempt from zoning.
They are exempt from zoning, but it depends on who you talk with about.
Well, who do you talk with?
I will talk with Noreen.
Why would they be, why would they be not, why would they be exempt from anything that's not zoning? For example, if this is a scenic, if if the scenic road designation was in place and they wanted to change the stone wall, they'd have to come to the planning board for a permit.
Right.
Because it's not in zoning.
Right.
So why wouldn't they have to go to the Stormwater Committee?
I will double check with Noreen on how she.
How is Noreen the authority on whether they need to get a permit from the Stormwater Committee?
She's the one who staffs the board. I will double check.
Well, is this to the Zoning Board of Appeals because?
Well, this is first to the Housing Partnership for a recommendation.
Let me get it clear. She is, so she's on the one hand, requisiting the Housing Partnership with respect to the submission to the Board of Selectmen, and on the other hand, determining what and what is not required for review on behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I believe that's the case.
Okay. Sounds like her calls what is interest.
Yeah.
So she'd be, which hat would she be wearing when she was making the determination of whether the Stormwater Committee would have to review this? She's, she'd be wearing the hat that says I'm the, I'm speaking for the Zoning Board of Appeals or I'm the hat that says I'm representing the applicant?
I'll inquire.
I'm just.
No, I'll inquire.
It just took me.
So if they're putting a private road in, it is sort of a subdivision. Right?
There's no discussion in the application that I could see on how they're proposing to maintain the common septic system, assuming it gets approved by the Board of Health.
This is going to need, this is going to need a package plan, I think. That's my guess.
It's 17 bedroom.
On an acre.
On 1.4 acres.
Right.
Right.
That's a, that's a lot, you know.
I would imagine there'd be some kind of condo fee or homeowner's fee or.
No, 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 just to get a field large enough to handle. And that's assuming that that the Board of Health standards will will agree that they that they're only dealing with 17 bedrooms, because it's no longer what the label on the plan says.
Right, right.
So it could be.
I mean, I could, I could argue 20 to 22 bedrooms.
Exactly. 22 bedrooms, five buildings on a one acre site.
1.4.
But they're only using the front part of it.
Right.
Isn't it number of rooms divided by two and add it up for subject capacity?
It's still, it's still 110 gallons of bedroom, but the question is what counts as a bedroom? It's not just, just because you write bedroom in the plan doesn't mean that it's limited to that, those rooms.
That's why I thought they did it as rooms and not bedrooms.
They do it, it depends on the proposal. In this case, I don't, I don't know what Wendy would do.
She's going to be back on Monday, so, and she hasn't looked at it.
Maintenance, capacity is the main thing. And setbacks are all thrown to the wind. Thrown to the wind, so they're right bang up against the neighboring lots.
And and the street.
And the street. Yeah, this is, this zoning is out the window.
Don't you have to be accepted as a LIP?
Yes.
That's the whole point. And that's why we're writing this letter.
That's right. I don't know who we're writing it to, by the way.
This is, I go to the Board of Selectmen, who has the only approval of the, of the LIP.
The Board of Selectmen, I would think.
Yeah.
But we're writing this to the Housing Partnership.
Well, who's going to be doing the first review, but we could certainly copy it to the Board of Selectmen.
Because they're the ones who.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't know on some of them.
I think it's a package plan, honestly. I do. Otherwise, I don't see how they could possibly squeeze an adequate leaching field on that property for that, for that number of rooms. If it perks, they could put it all underneath the roadway and drive it away. But there's, I don't think there's an overflow, so there's not a, you know. It's not a reserve. There's no, there's no reserve system. No. It's just the system and that's it.
But they're showing it, they're not showing it under the, that way. They're showing.
They're in a little.
Well, it's showing parallel lines in an area. And it's a pump system to boot. It's a 5,000 gallon system. I think that's what I had in my house.
Can you say anything different?
No. I think it's 5,000 gallons, because it's a pump system also.
In the high school.
Well, some of this is going to be gravity and I think some of it's going to be based on the.
I mean, I'm just trying to think about the relative size of, what is it, 162?
Yeah, but.
145 street, that little lot down next to the track.
I mean, the houses closest to the street are going to be down at a much lower level.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's pumped up to the field.
Right, right. So if you lose electricity, you're not pumping.
That's what you could actually do.
Right. There's so many, I have so many questions about this.
Yeah.
Why are we looking at 40B projects? I thought the whole objective, the whole mandate for the Housing Partnership was to craft a housing plan that got us off the hook for having to deal with 40B projects.
They are aware of that.
Yeah, but so now we have in front of us a 40B project.
I'm not sure that they knew about this. I'm not, I'm not defending them because I'm not on that board, but.
This is what happens when you don't do what you're supposed to do. You get surprises.
Yeah, and they've been incorporated for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Had enough time to do this.
Okay. The Housing Partnership is apparently going after CPC funds to do a plan. And the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen have to sign off.
Well, but their job one was to develop the plan. And another job one is apparently to sponsor a 40B project. 40B projects are punitive. They're there to teach towns a lesson that they better develop a housing plan or you get one affordable unit for five market units on one acre of land.
And you never ever catch up. Yeah, you never catch up 10%.
This is the whole reason the partnership was was formed.
They would admit that.
Yeah.
And I honestly think they got a little bit derailed with Pine Street project.
Oh, that was three years ago.
I, I know.
Well, trust didn't exist in this. Can we say that they all have to be affordable?
Well, it's not the trust, it's the partnership.
This is a, this is a private development.
I bet you said it wonderfully, because I was always.
Do you have permission?
Really excellent female about, you know, what the, you know, partnership is, which is and what the trust is. The trust basically goes ahead and does these things, you know, and acts, but the partnership's supposed to be doing the big overview for the town, developing the housing.
You're talking about wet basements on the site. What about wet basements on properties adjacent to the site or, you know, presumably that's why Stormwater.
This was, this was, feel free to dig in on you.
I think this is great.
Well, feel free to dig in and add more. It's the start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should say these are our initial comments.
Okay.
Because I'm sure we're going to have 40,000 more. This is the first time we've actually seen this. Right this minute. And these plans are just for permitting, not for construction.
That's it.
That's what it says, every one of the plans, permit plans, not for construction.
Does that mean you might get something totally different if the upper end, once the permitting's been?
That's what I think.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, well, we lied about that.
Sorry. Yeah, have fun.
I have a question, if I can ask one question.
Sure.
Can I have your names on the record?
Sure, it's Christopher Scott.
Your address?
My address is 90 Concord Road. And I'm wondering if the board is aware of the 40B proposal for 99 Concord Road?
Only by rumor. We haven't actually seen anything on that project yet.
Is there a way that someone can submit the proposal to the board, so the board will consider it?
Well, one of the questions I have about this is, we have, now we have some sort of proposal here with drawings and we've, and this is just cropped up and we've seen nothing on the Concord Road 40B project. Zero.
I was told it wasn't, it hadn't been submitted.
Well.
It was, it was.
They've shown it to people.
I went.
It was submitted to the Housing Partnership, a presentation with about 50 to 100 residents was there. The Housing Partnership wrote a letter to the Selectmen saying they didn't approve of it. And there was a presentation by the developer to the Board of Selectmen a couple of months ago, probably 50 to 100 people there as well.
What is the process? You know, we have process A, which is presentations and process. Wait, what happened?
And it's been silent. So the developer, obviously people complained about it during these two meetings. The developer's been silent. The thinking is that the developer's going to go the hostile 40B route and submit a, an application to the ZBA at some point. And it's for 24 units on four to five acres.
So did the Board of Selectmen agree with that it was not going to be supported locally?
They were silent on the issue. I mean, they, they heard the developer's presentation, they heard the residents' concerns. But my understanding of 40Bs is the Board of Selectmen really don't have much of a say in it. So they were sort of silent in terms of, you know, providing any decision or giving any world feedback. But the tone of the meeting was obviously they don't support it. And so the, and the, the Housing Partnership voted to not support it, which essentially means it has to go the hostile 40B route instead of the friendly LIP route. And so now we're kind of at a, we're just in a standstill waiting to see what happens.
I think our boards that are supposed to be. This is just a concept. It's not really a proposal. It's a concept.
Well, the 99 Concord is the same way, where it's a proposal with, you know, a 20-page proposal with the pro formas and so forth, blueprints, something out of the site.
You understand my question?
It's a little more detailed than the one you have for the North Avenue proposal.
The question is why? What's the process? What's the process? We've got that process where we've seen nothing. And then we have this process where we're asked to respond the night we see this. Who's asking us to respond? Noreen.
Noreen.
What, is it number Concord Road or you?
I meant 90 Concord Road.
Have you read Ed Coburn's statement on this project? I'm sure you have.
Sorry?
Ed Coburn wrote a statement about 99 Concord Road.
Well, so that statement was written when it was still in the quote unquote friendly phase. So the statement is on the town website was kind of before the developer even presented to the Housing Partnership.
We know nothing about 99 Concord. We get, we've been, and no one has communicated with us at all.
I did go to the public hearing, the Weston Housing Partnership's hearing on that when all the abutters were there. And Noreen happened to be sick for that meeting. And there was, from my perspective, a lot of confusion of what is a 40B? How could, how could people bypass zoning?
I mean, he had, Ed Coburn has written a whole piece on, it says the propose he talks about. I thought it would be helpful to try and clarify the process. And he has a piece here.
Who, who wrote that?
Ed Coburn wrote this.
Oh, okay.
90 Concord Road.
Yeah.
Join me.
Sure, is it, is it long?
You can tell me the stop in here, so you're listening. The proposal being put forward by Northland Development falls under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws 40B, which is designed to facilitate the construction of affordable housing communities where less than 10% of the housing stock is affordable. A little less than 4% of Weston Housing Stock is affordable under the definition state set by the state. And under Chapter 40B, developments are able to ignore certain local zoning laws, including specifically the allowance, the allowable density, as long as 20 to 25% of the units being built meet the state's definition of affordable. The law provides only limited opportunity for local town or city officials to alter the developer's plan. There are two paths developers can go with the 40B development, friendly or hostile. In a friendly 40B development, also known as a LIP, the developer works cooperatively with the town boards. Each side compromises in order to make the approval process faster. If the town is not adequately cooperative, the developer can pursue a hostile 40B, in which case the project review is made by the state rather than local officials. To date, all 40B developments in Weston have been done in a friendly process, and I suspect that will be the case here. That said, it is important to understand that the town's ability to stop slow or even alter the proposal is very limited under state law. And under Chapter 40B, local boards cannot stop developers from building these multi-unit developments until our affordable housing stock is 10% of our total housing units, which will require roughly another 200 affordable units. If you're interested in the LIP process, I encourage you to follow this process as it moves forward with the hearings of the Housing Partnership, the Planning Board, the zoning board, and the Board of Selectmen.
All right, I'd just like to make a couple of comments about that. I know a little bit about 40Bs since I've been the architect for a couple of them. The first one is that DHCD has to approve the 40B project. DH, it's a state agency. This and DHCD is, might be amenable to looking at a hostile 40B with as many as 25 units, but to look at a, at a hostile 40B with one affordable unit in five houses is almost, I would say the chances of that would be just about zero, because it's more trouble to DHCD than it's worth to get one affordable house out of, out of what is essentially an antagonistic process that goes on forever. And the other thing is that the 40B, you don't have to have all of the units built in order to be exempt from the 40B pressure. If you, if the town has a housing plan and schedule that says here are our goals for, for providing adequate affordable housing up to the 10% required. for providing adequate affordable housing up to the 10% required, the, my understanding of the, of the reason why the Housing Partnership was formed was to develop first a housing plan that scheduled goals so that we wouldn't be held hostage by 40B projects coming into town. That, that, that is not in, neither of those things is in Ed Coburn's exposition.
Maybe you guys want to expand on, this is all that's on the website.
Yeah, and the other thing that is not explained there in the process is why the planning board is seeing one project and given one evening to review it, the same evening that we're looking at it for the first time, and we haven't seen anything of the other project, nothing, no drawings, no, nothing. What, what is the, what is going on?
Have you ever seen, did you see any of the other ones, like Winter Gardens, 680 South Avenue, the one on?
Winter Gardens, the planning board did see.
That was the first one, I think.
That was the first one.
And so on, Busch Road, the big one, Busch Road.
Winter Street, I mean, the old bridge.
Yeah, that one. Um, we saw Carol Cito's.
Yeah.
We had a lot of, a lot of input on Carol Cito's. There was a lot of back and forth. And, and we had to do a lot of homework before the selectmen would even consider that as a LIP, as a LIP application. Uh, that we had to go, we had to present it in cooperation with Carol to the selectmen, and they would, and they, and they approved it, there was.
Yep.
This is, this is one evening.
Right.
When we're just asked to, to, to throw comments on the table, and that's it, that's our plan.
I remember that clearly, that it was really, it was, they had to, Carol had to apply, as we are, you know, I've worked with the planning board, this is, they find this plan is pretty good, it's acceptable, and it was a, it was an application process, it wasn't like at the last minute.
Same thing with Pine Street.
Yeah.
Pine Street was a, we went through site plan review on that, we were very, we, we looked at that very carefully, I, I don't know if you remember, but we, but we spent a lot of time, for example, on the driveway, because we, it's, it goes up a hill, we didn't want to have people sliding off in the winter, and there are all kinds of ish, planning issues. This is just.
Yeah, this is.
Astonishing, it's like.
Is this our one and only chance?
I don't know. You don't, you think?
I can't imagine. I mean, we're sending this to the board of selectmen, as well as other.
The Partnership is gonna be discussing it on the, I believe, the 12th of November.
Somebody needs to.
Well, I mean, the thing that's kind of amazing is that I know you found out about this almost by accident, that's what's kind of scary. There, there was, there was no, kind of, our previous due process, right? It, it's just sort of like passing in the hall, what, hey? And, and then you find out, and now, I think it's just really just because of you saying, I, maybe the planning board might like to make a little comment on this.
Really? Is that, is that, is that accurate?
Well, it was sent a while ago, but, I mean, it was sent the, what, I think the 28th of October.
Well, that's not a while ago, that's last week.
Yeah, it was last, and I sent it out.
It's a month ago.
No, no.
Yeah, it was, it was, like, that was it.
I had kind of heard mumblings about it, but then I hadn't, I didn't know anything was filed.
And it's the same thing with Concord Road, I mean, I, I've known about it, and I've been waiting, I kind of thought that whole thing got stalled somehow, and I'm not sure why it was stalled.
I think they have not filed, I mean, they obviously haven't.
From what we can tell, the builder hasn't taken the next step, which would be to apply to, to the Department of Housing and.
Right, this is 99.
This is 99 Concord.
Yeah.
So the next step for the hostile, for the builder to apply for the sponsoring agency, same agency that has done that yet.
One of the questions that I asked at the hearing for 99 Concord was, did they get site assignment from DHCD?
Mm-hmm.
Because you technically, as Al said, you have to have a, a site assignment, and, I mean, I've actually worked on permitting 40Bs, a handful of them, and I've dealt with them in Winchester, and a couple of Winchester sites, the developers didn't get site assignment from DHCD.
Right, DHCD is not an, not an approval.
So it's not a, exactly, exactly.
So why had both of these things come before us without even the base application to the housing, the state? I mean, is somebody in the town not aware of what the process should be, the person in charge of these things, not aware of, of the rules?
I mean, it's kind of, it's wasting everybody's time if it doesn't have site assignment.
I mean, I, I've gone through how many 40Bs, four or five as an architect, um, none of which I'm ashamed of, I'm glad to say, but this isn't like anything I've experienced as the architect for a 40B project at all, this is completely different.
Susan, who knew the process, probably ushered them through, then there was the, the period before Betsy, where we didn't have anybody, and maybe some of these things happened then, and the person in charge of this just had absolutely no knowledge that there was a process.
I think the Housing Partnership is dropping the ball, that's what I think. And that's on camera.
Well, they have applied for funds to do a housing production plan. And I don't know what, you're on the.
Yeah, the only thing we really talked about was the, the purchase of the Vile Street, that's, that's kind, this is, this is what I saw.
That's what's on the wall.
Was the focus has changed, and I thought that they applied, and I can't remember now whether, if they asked if they could just have administrative funds to develop this housing plan, you know, it should be something less than $25,000 out of the CPC, the CPA, but I don't know, and the, the focus was suddenly on this very pressing need because this house is for sale now, and they would like to move on, but nobody's ushering that through, and, and they're acutely aware, he's, he's very aware that if they had the housing plan, they would be so much better off in the eyes of the state.
So why don't they?
Oh, Al, why, someone reasonable, they've only done this for three years.
So I've actually looked at a bunch of housing production plans, and I've talked with a, a number of people, and there's a couple of consultants out there that kind of pump them out, and they're generally in the 30 to 35,000 range.
Really?
Yes.
Well, the housing, they haven't, they don't have that information. What they've done is they've actually looked at housing plans, like, they got the ones from Acton, and they got the one from Bedford, but they're not necessarily like communities, and I, I think they're missing that little thing.
You could crank the housing production plan out in probably a couple of months.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was, I was thinking probably like two weeks.
Really, so how do we, uh?
If you're really focused.
Yeah, I've given up plenty of time.
I mean, they're definitely so political biased. Is what I'm asking, so who do we talk to to tell them to talk to you, to get the names of these people, because they've been gathering information forever, you know, they have pretty clear view of what they, you know, vision they're trying to.
Why aren't they in front of us?
Because they don't know.
This is like an application with no proponent.
Do you want me to ask Polly's on CPC, we're having a meeting on Monday? You want me to say to her, please call Betsy, we're the town planner, she will, I, I really think they just don't know these things, they don't know.
Well, yeah, they get paid more than we do, don't they?
They get paid exactly the same amount, but they get extra benefits. They can reserve part of these days, but anyway.
Betsy, I think you're much too nice in your comments, by the way. For example, you're talking about down under roadway. This needs a full-blown traffic study. You know, it's not just repair the roadway, you know, lit entry sign, forget it. Come on.
Don't you want it to be the woodlands and meadows, and the Meadow Woodlands on 117?
Which are usually disappeared when the.
Yeah, of course, it is, it's really like, yes.
What is the site lighting on this? Is it, you know, spot, is it floodlights on the side of the building?
Yeah, I'm concerned about safety.
We don't have a plan, we just have a concept.
Yeah.
We don't have a proposal.
Yeah, I mean, the town, I don't think that even made it to their list, because the town zoning doesn't allow lit signs.
I, I would call it a concept proposal rather than a proposal. Okay, or a concept plan. It doesn't lies to the detail.
But Al, the person you think that really is getting a housing plan in, and, and in place, and if it can be done, you think in a couple of weeks.
Well, I said a couple of months.
Do you want to call you? Do you want me to call Polly?
There are, there are consultants all over the place, I.
It doesn't matter if there are consultants all over the place, if they don't know that they can get one.
And they don't make money.
Do they have any budget?
They, they could come before CPC in a hurry and ask for administrative funds, if it's something like in the 25 to 30,000 dollar range.
Warrant is closed.
The warrant is closed, but administrative funds don't have to go through a warrant.
But aren't you limited?
I'm not sure that they spent all their administrative, I, I'm not, you know, I'm just like three years there, but I know that there are funds that they can pull out, but these, sort of, the little concept plans for studies and things like that.
I'm, I'm amazed they haven't done it, I've just, I've just gobsnacked.
Well, but they haven't, so we can be shocked, stunned, amazed, but we, we need to do something.
Let me, let me say, let me put it this way, as a taxpaying citizen in this town, I'm angry they haven't done it.
I know.
That was their ma, that was their, that was task one.
Yeah. So.
So they need to get some money, and they need to hire consultants, they need to get cracking.
All righty, I'm asking which one of us is gonna deliver the message?
Yeah, you are.
I, you want me to talk to Polly? I don't know, Kim.
Who's the chairman?
You.
Talk to him. He's an attorney.
I know.
I mean, he's, he's Harold Hestness's attorney, he should, he knows what, he knows what's up, he wasn't born yesterday.
Want me to give him a buzz? Have a?
Yeah, let's find out what the, what's, what the roadblock was to getting this done.
I'm not gonna ask that, because, yeah, well, I'm not gonna ask them what that, I want them to put him on the defensive, but definitely want to say, hey, you know, housing plan, need one ASAP, call up Betsy, she's got some friends in high places, maybe crank one out for me.
Ask for some, ask for administrative funds from the CPC and get cracking. I, I think one thing we should say is that it's not worth it for, for the town to sponsor a project that generates this much impact, negative impact, for one affordable house.
You're kidding?
Yeah.
I know, you, you, you make it so that then you'll have to have two more houses, because you've increased your population that much, you know?
Right.
See, that's why you never catch up with a 40B.
Never catch up.
You never catch up.
Rental, rental properties are 100%.
Rental properties, right, but is this guaranteed rental?
No.
No, right.
This is homeownership.
Right. That's right, so this is, this is, yeah, yeah, no, that's one of the reasons that they're very interested in Viles.
We could have Jericho had 99 units, town could.
We could be buying Jericho units now.
We could.
And be adding them. That's probably what we should be doing, is just as they come up, buy them in their permanent.
We could bring that up with you when this.
Oh, I, no, he knows this.
That was task two to the Housing Partnership, their, their mandate was to find infill houses in neighborhoods.
Shocking that that was let go, honestly.
I know.
But it's not like they're not out there, you just mentioned Jericho Village. Instead, they're just accepting five-unit 40Bs where you, where the house gets, where the town gets one house out of it.
I, I, I proposed to the Housing Partnership a while back of, of, of an existing multi-unit dwelling in the town, and they, it was, it wasn't even worth it, the property owner was like, forget it. It was so hard, it would have brought six affordable units.
Wow.
Compliments.
Yeah, I have a question about that. The Housing Partnership is actually the policy board.
Yeah, they don't actually do it.
No, but they're supposed to actually identify the units, and then they transition over to the trust.
Right, right.
And Warren, Warren App has really occupied the trust, which is the.
Great, that was the question, because the trust can move.
They're the ones who actually move on it, yeah.
I put that in an email a couple of days ago.
No, you did, yeah, yeah.
To me, because I never understood the difference between.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I kind of chimed in on that, too.
Executive board, and the Partnership is the sort of policy board.
Now, I've also heard that there's a couple of units at the end of Burke Street that may become.
I'm sure there are places in town where it wouldn't be an arm and a leg to find a house that could be a duplex. There are a lot of little houses in town that aren't necessarily candidates for total replacement, but that's why I thought they were supposed to be beating the bushes to try to find.
Right, rental, rental is the key to enhancing the level.
And, and also, there's a certain income level that really makes a difference, too, if it's the 80%, isn't it, or is it the 100%?
I don't know, I think as long as it's a.
No, there's, it's actually, it counts, literally counts more, Sarah Rattigan was telling us this, it's, 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 it's very interesting. So, Betsy, you have the name and numbers of, what do they call?
There's a couple of consultants that are out there that, who, who are kind of standard we use.
Who towns use?
Yeah.
Towns, okay.
Or to formulate.
So, once we're done with this discussion, can we move on to the draft budget of these